Twenty fifth, June twenty eighth, presented by Darrell.
Motion on four, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on our agenda, administration public court, street closure request, request for temporary street closure for the Silver State International Rodeo Event from Fairgrounds Road from eight AM Thursday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three to eight PM Wednesday, July fifth, twenty twenty three. Same.
Same, same format, there's no changes.
I would make a motion to approve the street closure for the Silver State International Rodeo from June twenty seven at eight, eight PM till Wednesday, do you like to?
Motion on four, any questions?
This is just the, the rodeo itself, not the.
This isn't a.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, administration public court, street closure, request for temporary street closure for Tri County Fair and Stampede Event, Winnebago Boulevard from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM on September second, twenty twenty three, to accommodate the annual Labor Day Parade and Fairgrounds Road from three PM August thirty first to eleven PM September third. Anything change?
No changes.
With the fair and.
Annual event.
Okay.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the temporary street closures for the Tri County Fair and Stampede, it's presented.
Motion on four, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, administration public court, street closure request, request for temporary closure for Western State Ranch Rodeo Finals Event of Fairgrounds Road from the entrance of RV Park to the entrance of the indoor event center from eight AM November first to eleven PM November fifth, twenty twenty three. Anything change in?
Yeah, this has been a mostly annual event, so no changes.
I'd go ahead, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure request for Western State Ranch Rodeo Finals Event from the Fairgrounds Road from the entrance of the RV Park to the entrance of the indoor event center from eight AM November first to eleven PM on November fifth.
Motion on four, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Are we done with you for the year then?
I hope so. Thank you very much, Cheryl.
Thank you, Darrell. Keep up the good work, you guys do a great job, you work hard at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up here, we're gonna put you guys up in the front seat.
Uh-oh, we're on the last seat already.
And welcome.
Thank you.
So, we'll move back on our agenda to the item two, administration, twenty twenty three legislative session report, report on proposed legislation for the twenty twenty three session of the Nevada State Legislature. We have Ira Hansen, Alexa Hansen, and Sandra.
Chandra Summers Armstrong.
Thank you.
No problem.
We all know the Hansons, she's visiting us from Las Vegas, so it's kinda nice to have somebody from down south visiting us in the north and being concerned about some of our interests and things, so.
Thank you.
Lovely to be here.
Do you guys hear anything?
She was very excited to come.
Want to add?
Well, thank you, thank you for being here, thanks for having us. For those of you that don't know me, Alexis Hansen, I represent the Nevada Legislature for Assembly District Thirty Two, and we are excited to have Chandra share this trip that was planned, we wanna thank Louis Trout, who did all the logistics of trying to, while we could come here and have us meet with as many entities as possible and the public be invited. We represent, Senator Hansen and I happen to be married, and so we share the district, at least in the rural part of the state, we cover six counties. Fortunately, Humboldt has been part of our district, at least for me, since I was elected in twenty eighteen, served twenty nineteen, session twenty one, and some special sessions. And so we just wanted to make ourselves available, considering COVID had made getting out here and being meeting in person in our building unfortunately was closed at the legislature most of the time during the twenty one session, we wanted to make a trip out, visit, see what, what your concerns are from your municipality, make ourselves available to whatever capacity, you know, we have influence at the state legislature, and we had developed a friendship with some of the women, Summers Armstrong, and she had invited, graciously invited us to see her district in Las Vegas, in Assembly District Six, which we took her up on in September, and then she happened to be up north for the governor's state of the state, and said, hey, let's go, and I said, Chandra, it takes sixteen hours to drive our district. But we just so happen to have meetings planned in Humboldt County, and we'd love for you to come, and she says, please, I want to hear what, what those, you know, what those issues are in rural Nevada, so, so proud that she would spend this time with us and be locked up in the car with Senator.
Well, that's the only problem, she discovered why she was driving up it, that she was allergic to conservative Republicans. She had to put a mask on.
She had to put a mask on, she has asthma, poor thing, and the cold makes it worse, stress makes it worse, the way he drives, and in fact, we should find out where the sheriff is, follow us home. So anyway, thank you for having us, and the deal is into your, your agenda.
You're welcome. It's nice to have you here, it's kinda frustrating, the last legislative session being closed, not being to attend any of the hearings, and given any input that way, so, and it's nice to have you back. Thank you.
Right, yeah, it will be different session again, it'll be open.
Good.
And hopefully more balance out COVID behind us.
We, we look forward to, you know, they usually have a mayor's day, and local government's day, and we enjoy going, participating, so.
I would also like to encourage you to let your community know that there will still be the available ability to watch online, they will still be able to call in and make comment, there are ways for folks to make comment online, so even if they're not able to travel, we need to hear from all the constituents of Nevada who have an interest in what is going on, and one of the things that is really, what we have learned from one another is how similar the needs of our communities are in rural places as well in urban places that have been subject to this investment, we need people to be concerned about our issues, and we need to be heard, and oftentimes, in my community, people don't know that, so look out for, I'm hoping to have something on my website, but there are other organizations that are putting out primers, that are teaching people how to participate electronically, teaching people how to testify, these are things we all need to know, so that we can represent our communities in the legislature, we wanna hear from you. Thank you for having me today, I appreciate it.
And that was a silver lining, you know, there were some silver linings in the pandemic, that ability to, to be able to have public comment, you know, remotely, to have other people be able to see and view and participate in meetings, they, they're keeping a part of that structure, so, we're glad for that.
We're all, everything, you know, we've got the equipment because of that.
Yes, at first.
It really is nice.
It's even nicer when you can show up face to face, you know, it's nice to see us up here.
The option.
Reality, just like right now.
It's easier, it's easier to go nose to nose with you, to get your point of. With that, I think our city manager has a couple of things that she wants to bring up, I know these, they were just up the county commission, and got a lot of good input up there, I was up there for a while, and our city manager has a one or a couple.
Yeah, it's, um, a couple of things that have affected our public works department. This past year, new regulations were put in place for obtaining a commercial driver's license, a CDL, and it's made it extremely difficult for public works, workers in rural areas, they do need a CDL to drive things, like.
You keep notes for me too.
Like street sweepers, snowplows, our back truck that's used in the water and sewer department, the changes that were made require all CDL drivers to attend about an eight week class at a certified training facility, and those aren't in rural areas, not yet anyway, and so the closest classes were either, there was one in Elko, there's one in Reno, there's another in Gardner Ville.
But it's an eight week course.
It's an eight week course, and for us to send an employee there just to get their CDL, it would cost the city of Winnebago about eight thousand dollars, in travel, back and forth, room while they're staying there, and the class itself is, was pretty expensive, and so that's, it's a pretty significant burden, and there is.
Before you leave that one now, prior to the passage of that bill last session, how was it handled?
There was, they had to pass the test, and they had to complete a certain amount of hours with a licensed driver, but there was no eight week training course.
Now it was much more practical?
Yes.
Who, who, do you know who pushed that bill through, the property association or?
I don't know.
Okay, we gotta go home, but anyway, it's impacted you significantly, not just the finances, we probably have a hard time getting employees to wanna go do this.
Right, yeah, yeah, people don't wanna be away from their families for eight weeks just to get their CDL, there is an exception for, it's, it specifically states driving a snowplow if no other CDL driver is available, and really, we would be super happy if there was an exception for public works in general, and that could be expanded beyond snowplow to street sweeper, public works type equipment, not semis that are going across state lines or anything like that, but for public works equipment that is being driven within a certain jurisdiction.
So can I just ask you one more question, what about liability?
As far as for the license?
For the municipality?
So our liability insurance, which covers all our vehicles and all our equipment and our employees, is through Pool Pact, so we have liability insurance as well as property insurance for those.
And was that insurance in place before this change in law, so you're, they're not gonna say, oh, you gotta have the eight week course?
Pool Pact has never mentioned that to us.
Okay, perfect, so that's the insurance you have before the law, and that's the one you still have, okay, so that's not gonna.
You didn't get any big discount after the many day requirement?
No, no, it's never even come.
I had asked, I already give the answer.
I was gonna say, if you did, could you tell me, cause we have business victim insured plumbing trucks, so.
Oh, yeah.
No discounts ever. Okay. And you said that was last, last session?
It went, it went into effect in twenty twenty two, I'm not sure when the bill was actually passed.
It might have been a rig, so I haven't looked at it, it was a rig, probably, so I looked at it, twenty twenty two, it went into effect?
Pardon the interruption, keep going.
That's all right, I'm done with that one. Up at the county meeting, Abel talked a little bit about broadband, and I just wanted to expand on his comments about the FCC maps, and how they don't really take into account the rural areas, so if you look at the FCC maps right now, which are based on unserved, which no service available, underserved, which I believe is below twenty five megabits per second available, and then you're considered served if you have service available over twenty five megabits per second, the map will show that Winnebago is served, because if you contact any of our local providers and you ask them, can you provide twenty five megabits per second, they'll say, sure, we can provide it, but if they don't actually provide it, so the FCC has asked the providers if they can, and they say, yes, we can, but then they don't, and so even though it appears that the city of Winnebago is served, the providers actually are not providing that service.
On the map, with the last broadband that we were at, my house is served, but Zito will not serve my house, they have problems with connections in that area, ATT is, doesn't provide that service there, so, you know, they're, they're saying it's served, but it actually, I was getting maybe one or two megabytes in that whole neighborhood up there, so it's, it's a problem.
More common than not.
And, and if you ask how to update the map to reflect what's currently in place, it requires the property owner to go in there and fill out a form that says, this is what I've actually got, or I've requested service and I didn't get it three consecutive weeks or something like that, it's just not something that people are going to do to update the map, that they really don't even know exists.
Interesting enough, Chandra brought that up in the meeting, in her community in Vegas had the same situation basically, but I wrote up, the governor did say in his speech, and we heard it, they, they, he did say that it involves four hundred million bucks to try to help rural communities especially, and under, underserved areas.
Yeah, the money is for unserved or underserved, based on their maps, and they're saying they're served.
Explain that, yeah, Winnebago in spite of the map is actually an underserved community.
Yes.
I did hear something on the radio too about the emergency government broadband services, that you have to be, already be a part of one of those four government programs, that you have to be underserved financially in order to take advantage of whatever that program is, I don't know if that has anything to do with anything about.
We run into that as well, a lot of the federal funding for different programs, whether it's federal broadband or CDVG or any of those, a lot of times, Winnebago is disqualified because our median income is high because of the mine wages, but just because the median income is high does not mean we have broadband available, you know, we, we still need access to the broadband even for our, our people who are lower income, so that's, that's always been an issue for Winnebago is just qualifying for some of the funds because the median income is high.
Not affordability, it's actual infrastructure access.
There's no correlation between the median income and the availability.
Yeah, yes.
In this area.
In this area, precisely.
And a couple of things I'd add onto that, one, Chandra, I really appreciate your comment about the school buses, and I thought that was a great point that you made, I think we had those issues out Grass Valley, where we had, you know, the bases where kids could come to do their homework, so some good came out of it, but we didn't have, not really good. The second thing I know with Alexis, you mentioned about Starlink, one of the things we have here is, I'm sure there are at least half of the people in Humboldt County, maybe, have applied for Starlink, and you might get one fiftieth of it, I mean, I've had Starlink requests for two years.
And you, you've not received your satellite?
No, it's just on a wait list, so Starlink is available, but not available, I mean, they're just not throwing out more access to it, so it's something else that, cause I know I have Starlink personally, but at work, I can't get it, and I know people have been on the list for a couple of years.
Well, and something that I found irritating, and I think Starlink's working through it, I don't understand all the FCC regulation of the carriers and all this, I know Starlink's being pushed out because they can, that was the whole point of Starlink, was to make internet available to everybody in the world, in Communist China, wherever, so that the government didn't tell you, or regulators like FCC or carriers could say, you have it in this community, you don't have it in this community, everybody can have access to the sky, so I noticed when I went to get it, and you look at the map, it'll show, oh, you don't have it, because they're not allowed to, even though somebody right outside the little mark will have it on their ten or twenty acre parcel, but the subdivision next to that doesn't, the carriers have got jurisdiction, I think it's almost like territories that you get, and so Starlink said in twenty twenty three, it would be available to areas that were previously, when you looked on the map, say in the Reno Sparks area, no, and like, with Chandra, she lives in Vegas, right, you think, those of us in the urban center have really great internet, no, I have terrible internet where I live in Sparks, and had to go to something else, and then it went up, but are you guys DSL, is that where a lot of you are on?
Some, the, the older stuff is still on DSL, I was on DSL, but I felt one and a half up and about, you know, point five down is all you could get, you know, and so changed to a different system, you get more, but yeah, DSL is really, and it depends on the quality of your phone lines, of course, and in some of our areas, they're, they're not good.
Right, no, and that's what I mean, DSL is just so slow, that makes it really hard for, if you're doing remote stuff, it's almost impossible, so, okay, thank you.
This last thing I wanna say, it really creates an inequity for your availability in your community, for your, for your businesses, to be able to compete internationally and nationally, for your students, who may want to stay here and do online courses, or anything, it just, this is why I'm here, because this is the same stuff that we're facing, and it just makes absolutely no sense, so, yeah, I, I told Abel that I would check, and I definitely will.
Well, certainly, like what you said at the beginning, we have a lot of things that we're different with, but we have a lot of things, don't have the exact same problem, I mean, for us, even hiring out of state employees, when they come in and say, what's your download, and you just lie, and you say, ten, oh, we need a hundred and fifty, I mean, we need whatever, but you don't even think it's a real number, that they have to come because they need that kind of speed to do their work, so.
It's important too, you brought that, brought up that, see, I would have left this meeting from the county, from the county commission, and gone to legislatures, what are you talking about, Winnebago, look at the map, it's right here, you guys are fully served, you gotta be kidding me, you know, so I'm glad you made that point, cause I'm not very up to speed on that stuff, and I would have gone, geez, well, you're okay, I don't need, you know, I worry about it.
You know, we're more important.
Just kidding, you're all in the same boat, I need for you.
And then the, the last thing on my list, which comes up frequently, is the public works projects, the dollar limitation, it's gone back and forth between two hundred fifty thousand and a hundred thousand, out here in the rurals, we're always advocating for a higher threshold, almost any project we do, you know, ends up over a hundred thousand dollars, which puts us in that public works project range, and, and then just adding on the dollars for mileage from Reno is a killer, because we take Reno's prevailing wage, and then we have to add anywhere from two to five dollars on top of that for our prevailing wage projects, so it adds about forty to fifty percent onto the cost of any of our projects to, to use those prevailing wages.
A lot of that, of course, is pushed by the trade unions, you know, I'm a planner, so.
We fought this one for years.
Yeah, it was a, even at two hundred and fifty, you know, nowadays, the cost of material on a smaller project, you know, they, they didn't, I've personally balanced it out, but I, I wonder if we could get a carve out for, for rurals or something, or at least bump that number up for the rural areas, for some explanation why, cause the, the bulk of the trade union folks are in Vegas and Reno, and I don't think you guys have a big union issue here at all, so I'm kinda like, okay, how can we help out here?
Or a, or a, a difference prevailing wage, what is the actual prevailing wage for these rural communities?
Have their own.
Yeah, Washoe County.
Maybe in a rural classic.
They do have different prevailing wages for the counties of liberal, but it's, but it's a self fulfilling thing, because they use the union wage, not what's being paid, so, so it keeps, it keeps it hot, you know, artificially hot, and the cost of the taxpayers is like, well, Alicia said, we're looking at thirty five percent to fifty percent added to the cost of the project, that's taxpayer money, whatever it is, so.
So, question, I know we talked a minute ago about the, you said that the high median income here has an effect on some of the access you have in the broadband space, right, you were talking about that earlier, would that affect your prevailing wage as well, or is it specific to the trades?
It's specific to what they're paying, there's, there's, they categorize out, you know, laborers and, you know, whatever, all kinds of special things, and specific to whatever the, the classification for the, the trade is, is what it is.
And those are state charts, is it a state, I've looked at it, but I think it's a state.
But the labor commissioner gathers a debt.
Right.
And then promulgates the prevailing wage, but the labor commissioner's office is union, let's face it, it's all union people, and, and so it just, it just keeps going, and it's, it's, it's killer for these small jurisdictions, we, we've tracked project after project after project here, consistently, you know, we've, we've asked bidders to give us a non prevailing wage cost and a prevailing wage cost, and it, it will be consistently thirty five percent higher, yeah.
And that's schools, everything, any public.
Any, any funding thing, yeah.
And, and there's no appetite at the legislature for a bill too?
None whatsoever.
And I, I think one of the frustrating things for the city, and probably the county too, to a certain degree, is our projects, which are big for us, aren't big in our commercial, I mean, we have to go out and get a prevailing wage bid for a bathroom, for a soccer field, that could have cost us a hundred and ninety, that cost us three hundred and thirty thousand, and it's just, I mean, besides the fact that I'm now paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a bathroom more, it's our taxpayer money, that we didn't have, we not budgeted for three hundred thousand, so you're right, our materials have gone up considerably more, but.
If that money went to a plumber, I'm okay with it.
We were involved in that issue, I should have brought another example.
No, I'm just kidding, but yeah, it, it is a big issue, not, you know, and if you were in Reno or Sparks, you have unions and stuff, and that's a competitive bidding market there, but out here, it's not, and just even to get tradesmen out here in some cases for projects is difficult, then you add on that cost to, you know, excessive cost that you can, you know, in competitive arguing now.
Do the council members have any new issues they wanna bring forward?
I, I had one, and Alexis, you mentioned that there's eight hundred bills that eventually get through, and I'm not sure if I followed that they are passed, or they're, are they passed?
Yeah, usually we have about eight hundred, eleven hundred bills to.
It's a little higher than that.
Well, no, BDRs are different, so there'll be a lot more BDRs, about eleven.
Bill draft review, something makes them.
Then the actual bills that will come and have hearings somewhere around eleven hundred, and the those that make it through a committee, or they die in committee, or whatever, it's about eight hundred.
On average.
On a, on an average, final vote that we're pushing a button that becomes, goes over to the governor for signature, so.
I, I would really think it'd be great at some point, I know we're all just bogged down with bureaucracy and paperwork, and I think every year when you add eleven hundred or eight hundred, I'd love there to be something that says, you bring a bill, you move it, and, and that, that would become, that's code of honor.
That's eleven hundred and one.
Yeah. And believe me, I, there's been those bills before, to try, we tried it a recession, to limit, and as legislators, the longer you're there, the more bills you get, and I was going to bring a bill to, but somebody else brought it on, on one of my other colleagues, whether it'll get a hearing, and that is, limit, we don't need to have this many bills as legislators, which limits how many bills are our period, so yeah, it's, it's a lot, and consistently, so we have six counties that we represent, six school districts, and I've been really involved lately with the, the superintendents in my district, over the, the student safety.
Funding problem.
Well, the students say, well, that, but the student safety and staff safety bill, that we're trying to reform a little bit, and as I've talked with those, those school officials, it mandates, all the things that we're doing at the state level add more layers, so I know the same happens for you, there's more layers, and more layers of paperwork and other regulations that really impede your, your efficiency, and same at the school, so believe me, we hear you, and, and I know she hears you, so we're gonna try to, gonna try to.
Do our part, and one of the things that we know too, is that when we have these mandates, often it requires the state to have some role, and how low are they, thirty five percent?
Thirty five.
Down, in their staffing, so I think we'd all need to be sensitive to what this means when you pass the bill, how is this going to be implemented, and do the departments within the state have the capability to move, get things done, and if they don't, why not? We talked, the, the governor last night spoke about increasing pay to try to get retention, we're competing, and we stated very clearly the last night, against, you know, some great states in the nine western states, and if we're not competing with money as far as as income and benefits, we're not gonna keep people, and all they do is come here, get good skills, and leave, so how do we encourage your young people to stay, how do we encourage my young people, cause they leave my community as well and go someplace else, and I'm trying to rein my middle son back in from Minnesota to bring himself back to Nevada. And I'm trying to rein, uh, my middle son back in from Minnesota to bring himself back to Nevada, so that I can be near my grandbaby. How do we grow our state, and we have to respect that, we have to pay people what they're worth, we have to invest in the infrastructure that keeps people here, like with broadband, um, and, and the things that make work-life balance a reality. And so, um, we're listening, and, um, I'm, I, I try not to have too many bills this time, because I just, I just don't want to do that, right? And so, we'll do our very best.
And tell, uh, I'd like you to hear Shandra's background, what she brings to the table as far as her work experience.
Uh, um, um, okay. I, RTC, so, I'm a legal secretary by trade. Um, my mom had a legal transcription business out of our home, out of our kitchen, when I was a kid, and she, um, showed us, uh, that was our training, that was, that was how we got trained on how to be business people, um, on the single phone with the cord that stretched. If there wasn't a spanking thing on the weekend, it was a phone cord that you'd use for the telephone, uh, the other days. And, um, I went to the legal secretarial school, and married young, moved to Europe, and then came back to Vegas and worked in law firms. Somehow got involved, um, through Public Works and zoning and stuff like that in my community, uh, in, um, in community activism, and, uh, then ended up working at the courthouse for about two and a half, three years, and then ended up with the Regional Transportation Commission for twenty-six years. I retired, uh, this past February of last year. And so, that experience, especially at the Regional Transportation Commission, uh, really gave me an insight in how capital improvement programs are put together, uh, 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 horizon planning, long-term planning, uh, how to use your money, how to stretch it, looking at how the gas tax affects, whether or not you can fund your projects, um, in municipalities all across the state, um, how we do that. We un-sen-sent it, uh, gas tax in, in, in Clark County a couple of years ago. Um, and these things matter. In, in many communities, that's the only way that you can get roads repaved and maintenance done. Um, I don't know if you all do, um, uh, things like pedestrian bridges, uh, over dangerous streets, or, um, down there, we do that. And, um, you know, we do things like complete streets where we try to keep it from getting hit by cars, by widening sidewalks and adding buffers of, um, of, um, vegetation to protect people from, and let them bike bikes. So, there's all these things that we are trying to do to improve the environment where we live, so that people will stay, right? And enjoy where they live, and so my years there really kind of primed me for this, and I really, really enjoy both judiciary work, fight with Ira, love Alexis, fight with Ira, and, um...
She fights with me, too, so you're okay.
Yeah, I, I just fight with you.
Can you all envision this, the three of us for two-hundred miles? He didn't also talk.
She's got the mask on, I told you.
She has asthma.
Yeah, but we're, we had a good time.
As part of eleven hundred bills, I got a bunch of them, but they're part of that three hundred that don't go anywhere, you don't have to worry about that.
I figured you got to throw somebody out to get some.
Yes.
You know, one of the things that, that I find troubling with the bills is, almost every single bill draft has a fiscal impact, it's none. And, and the reality is, there's almost fiscal impact on almost every, you know, enactment that goes into place, and if, 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 if that process could be better refined and, and more accurate, that, I think, would be very helpful, because especially, you know, a lot of us, you know, there's no fiscal impact, well, there is, everything we do, I mean, we don't have staff here in a small city like Wyoming. We just don't have staff to do a lot of things that are required to be done, it's just, it's not there.
Well, just, you know, as legislators, one of the reasons that they try hard to get a no fiscal impact, if it's this fiscal impact, it has to go to finance or ways of meeting. And then the chair there has immense power to kill your bill.
Right.
So, even though we know there are often fiscal impacts, the, the, they, they pressure LCV, our legislative council bureau, to not put a fiscal note on it, if at all possible, even though you know, in reality, that everything we do has a fiscal impact.
Well, it's an absolute untruth, is what it is, you know, so...
You were, you were like accusing politicians of not telling the truth.
One, one of the, another thing I, I noticed they've talked about, you talked about through school, are they gonna address this restorative justice business there?
That's what I was bringing up, so, a little history, yeah, a, a assembly bill, if I remember right, uh, just like people in, in government talking acronyms, people in the legislature talking bill numbers, so AB one sixty-eight was in twenty nineteen. Chairman Thompson, a wonderful colleague, um, very thoughtful, and he died suddenly during the session, and we were all devastated. And this was his bill, so it was a very emotional bill, and he really believed in kids, he worked in the community with kids, and he had this restorative justice bill, and so, in, in intent, and his, his co-sponsor, somebody woman Torres, so his intent was, um, and this bill passed unanimously, uh, in the assembly.
Whoa, 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 there was one hard-hearted jerk that voted against it in the senate.
So, in the assembly, it passed unanimously, on the senate side, there was one no, it was sitting over there. So, unfortunately, he was right, there were some unintended consequences that he was worried about.
I mean, unfortunately, I was wrong.
So, um, those unintended consequences were seen play out, unfortunately, and some pretty horrific violent episodes in schools in, in Clark County. I know we've had two just recent ones in the, the Washington County School District that were pretty horrific, and I know, speaking with Superintendent Jensen, um, and, and a shout-out to him, he has worked hard to put together a coalition of the other superintendents, so we have every superintendent on board in the entire state to do some sort of reform, and so I'm carrying that bill on behalf of the superintendents, and we are working with, uh, and this is how it should work, we're working with the, the co-sponsor, somebody woman Torres, um, who teaches at a charter high school in Clark County, and, you know, work with us, so we preserve the intent of what she's, and, and Tyrone Thompson were trying to get at, but fix the problem. So, that's what we're working on. The governor mentioned it in his speech, that was priority. And so, um, we're, we're going to hopefully get there, and, and as I've talked, you know, the, the school unions are on board with it. Um, they actually wanted to go further, but we know in legislation, if you ask for too much, you end up getting nothing, and you, you can go too far the other way. So, we want to make sure we find the sweet spot, so, that being said, we hope to see some, some success there.
Uh, I'm not familiar with AB one sixty-eight, can you explain the concept?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the one where, um, instead of expelling kids, um, we work with them, find some restorative justice. It's a, it's a whole philosophy and concept in dealing with kids who are, you know, getting into trouble in school. And, um, I think the pendulum swung a little too far, it, and help me, Shandra, if I missed something. If it was a gun or drugs, that was the only time you could expel, otherwise you had to...
Were drugs involved in that?
Well, you would wonder, but some of the, yeah, no, 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 what I mean is, sometimes are these kids acting out because they're on drugs, right? But, no, so it, essentially, the only threshold was drugs or a gun.
So, what happens is, you've got a child that is, I think, turn to bush league for a child, but you've got kids who's done something wrong, you can't take him out of the system and remove the problem, you gotta put him right back in there, or accommodate them in ways that, again, the rural schools don't have the ability to accommodate, they just don't have the facility, and I'm assuming it's not much different in Clark County. Clark County's problems are horrendous, because there's so many, it's a large district, you know, but...
Well, and I will say this, too, um, restorative justice requires, um, actions. And if the school district is not clear in their action and setting up the system to restore justice, to have checks and balances, to have a process in place that is making this work, it's not going to work. Um, I have a son who teaches, um, uh, intermittently, he's a substitute teacher, uh, in, in the school district, and we've been hearing for years in our community that it is not being implemented in the way that it was intended. The way it was intended is that you set up a program that actually addresses these things. What we are seeing, what I'm hearing often, is that the children are being warehoused, just sent in classrooms, or in the gym, or wherever, and they're not getting, uh, the social services, or the wraparound, or the, uh, the, the, the programming, but that would help them improve, right? Again, as you said earlier, are we doing, um, is the difference between mercy and justice?
We're trying to find, you know, because we started on judiciary, and I've made the comment that I'm the daughter of the DA, but that doesn't mean I necessarily approach everything a prosecutorial sense of being. I also have that sense of, of mercy, and so we're trying to find that balance of justice and of mercy, and to find that sweet spot. And somehow with this bill, it, it lacked a little bit more maybe of, of the justice, and I don't think the mercy part was being implemented properly, and that kids were maybe, if they're being set aside, are they getting those services, or are they even getting the affirming kinds of conversations they should have? This is unacceptable, we don't treat other people like this, we da-da-da, and if you do it again, these are the consequences. You know, you don't just put a kid in a corner and say nothing, they have to understand what it is they did wrong, have accountability for it, and I think all of that kinda is lost a little bit in, as, in a school system that is overwhelmed with a lot of other things. We talked about it earlier today, the schools have had to become the practice of mental health. Um, you know, not something that had to do in my day, and I, I'm what was called, what would've been called, an at-risk child, raised by a single mother, lived in a trailer, moved seventeen times in eighteen years, uh, my mother, my mother was married five times. Um, I was exposed to things that I, and never mind, right, mine would ever expose my children to. So, I came from kind of that environment, but yet, we didn't have even the issues in my school. The teachers had the time to take care of and fill the needs I might've needed then, um, because just the way society is gone, we're dealing with problems in our schools that teachers unfortunately have to deal with. And then we throw this at them, and say, now, you gotta do restorative justice, even though it would be a good thing for the child, how much can we ask of these administrators and teachers? Uh, at some point, we have to ask ourselves, what, what are we piling on here, and, uh, so, anyway.
It'd be nice for them to have some time to teach.
Yes.
This is the area that Shandra and Alexis debate with Ira on.
Chief Frangell, do you have anything you want to bring up?
As a matter of fact, I do.
I wish they'd just let us know.
Yes, I'm not gonna go into the law enforcement side, the area, because it, that's a totally different animal that wouldn't be, you're very likely to... There's two, two areas of concern that I have, and you mentioned about, um, the pleasures of living in the rural area. One of them is the quality of life, we like to think it's, it's better, I guess, and I'm biased, I guess, yeah. But unfortunately, all those, uh, the, the legislation wasn't nice to rural areas, where it could be. I'm not gonna speak for the urban areas, I don't know, law enforcement, we have the same amount of, well, we have the same crimes here as they do in rural, in urban areas, but here, they're more transparent, and they're more, they're more focused by the community. Therefore, when the, the laws changed, it really caused a lot of havoc, it's still causing havoc, such as in June last year, excuse me, July of last year, possession schedule one drug, excluding marijuana, went from under four grams possession to a hundred grams. And I don't think, I, I don't think there was a lot of oversight on there, or thought, of, on the thought process, because that helped, um, not on the criminal side, but mainly on the possession side for the overdose levels, okay? The less schedule one, there, there are people, I'm gonna say they're law-fearing people, because they're already violating the law, but they, they get caught with X amount, little amounts, user levels, there are high probability they're not even gonna overdose. But since it went from the low, um, amounts to the very high humongous, humongous amounts, the overload, overdose, um, probability is increased by...
Exponentially.
Yes, um, then you take into account to the fentanyl situation. A gram of fentanyl, forget it, is, is deadly to a population of women, but... So, I know that, uh, Governor Lombardo did mention something about addressing dependent...
Category B felony.
And I totally, one hundred percent agree with that. Not to incarcerate people, not for that, but rather, there's criminal punishment. You don't need to have fentanyl, fentanyl is very deadly, very, very, than any, than any other drug.
Only needed is an anesthesia overdose.
So, you're basically saying even a, well beyond, beyond even a gram should be a serious crime? When you pick somebody up, even if it's just a tiny trace, it should be significant, because it's a kill.
It kills.
First time.
Yes, and it's, uh, we're talking, you know, micrograms, and I'm talking even four grams, um, not unlike methamphetamine.
Yet that's included in that whole, uh, state law now, that, okay.
Because it's a schedule one, so, I don't know why anybody needs, um, hundred grams of cocaine, or a hundred grams of, of, uh, methamphetamine or heroin, I don't mean personal use, you're gonna die, but, so that's a concern here. Not, it, it, it only, um, challenges on, on maintaining the quality of life, but, um, it also, in my opinion, just created more users, because of the flexibility, the, the perceived social acceptance of these, these drugs.
Decriminalization made it more socially acceptable.
Correct, and, and I'm not talking about the law enforcement side of it, I'm talking about the social side of it, because I'm still a member of this community, and I see it. The, oh, it's just, it's just methamphetamine, there's just coke, it's just heroin, in small mountains, it's the just part of that. It's not acceptable, it shouldn't be acceptable, but highly addictive, and, 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 they go to schools, they go everywhere. All it did is manage to, um, reduce the cost and increase the amount.
Basic economics, supply goes up, costs go down. What's interesting about that, uh, uh, chief, is that, on the whole marijuana thing, it was quite an interesting debate, because one of the main reasons they legalized it in Nevada was to supposedly eliminate the black market. And that, our last, last session, we had testimony, that the black market's actually expanded beyond what it was, in spite of legalization, and the ability to go in and buy the stuff right off the counter. It was quite interesting, because then, you know, the other argument was, well, you're gonna tax it, and therefore it'll bring in revenue, people are using it anyway, you might as well make some money on it. Well, it turns out that the actual tax revenue from it is substantially less than they anticipated, because the black market didn't go away, because it's fifteen percent different, basically.
Correct.
It was quite interesting, in hindsight, seeing, you know, some of the arguments, what happened to the, especially in the law enforcement community.
I don't think they asked us for our opinion, I mean, they don't, because, uh, yeah, everybody's got their personal opinion of marijuana, and that's not, there's not time and place to debate that, or not, we debate everybody.
We lost the debate.
Yeah, we're done, um, but it's not, it's not the marijuana part. It's this, of these other drugs that, because it started with marijuana, that you can...
We used to call it the gateway drug, remember, in the old days?
That's right, now, we have, we have to deal with all these. I don't think I, I've responded to a, an overdose death of THC. Matter of fact, in, in my service, I don't think I actually got into a fight with somebody high on marijuana.
That's true. Pretty easy going.
Anything else, it's different, don't act out of humor, and that's the truth, um, and that won't beat that one, maybe you guys can help us out with...
See, it's the ones.
Maybe you don't call it trafficking, trafficking is a very hard term for the layperson to understand. The three levels of possession. Level one possession, level two possession, level three possession, call it good, I think it's just burg, burgling, I guess.
Well, I would say you got a governor that was the sheriff, so there's a lot more sympathy towards the law enforcement community, community than in the last session. And so, there may be some reforms on some of that stuff, uh, you know, the fine-tuning stuff that we're talking about. Because obviously, it harms, uh, not just Wittenmuck, but all communities, and so, while we want to punish people that are doing significant things, the idea was kinda like, well, you know, they're gonna smoke pot, and remember, that was a statewide ballot question, the people in Nevada, our hands are basically tied up, because they legalized marijuana. I was against it, I'm still against it, but, you know, there are limitations to what we can do at this point. But on other things, like the grams, how many and so forth, that's probably something that we could, pardon the pun, tweak with.
And the governor did mention, um, the public, you know, public safety is three pillars of his administration, and it's public safety, so this certainly, I think, would follow to that, education and the economy, so, um, definitely, I think, as part of some of the... So, definitely, I think, as part of some of the criminal justice reform, we're gonna be addressing some of those things. And I think this was in the provisions that was in AB one, or two thirty-six, which was kind of an omnibus criminal rejustice reform bill. And there were many parts I really liked. And I even talked to Chair Yeager, it was his bill, and I have a good rapport with him. And I said, why'd you put so many things in it? Because like, I don't like this, this, and this, and now I gotta vote no, when I really like this, this, and this, and this. So, I know that you're not, you're not the first to mention that there's some things we have to go and revisit and see what the consequences have been since that happened, but.
We also are on judiciary too, and that's the committee that those kinda bills go to. So, we'll have a shot at it. And, you know, I think law enforcement's gonna feel a lot more comfortable with this session than last. Hopefully, we'll be able to make some improvements in the law to help you guys and reduce the problems you see in the community. You're on the front lines, and most people, yeah, I saw a stone guy there. You get those calls every damn day and, you know, people stealing and all the things related to that so-called harmless crime, you know?
Well, that leads me up to my second part, is that part. Is because it's, there's nobody wearing a uniform that wants to see an addict go to prison. We don't. We want them to get help. But here, it's difficult to find help or get help because we're far away from that now.
A mental health issue.
Yes.
Or addiction.
We need the resources, correct, we don't have the resources to help the ones that, A, yeah, we caught this person that's an addict with some, something that's popular or whatever, and they go to jail. What happens?
Serve their time, get back out, and go right back into what they're doing.
They're burglarized, send them to home and stuff like that. Though the victim of the burglary needs justice, that's a totally different animal, let's take to this one. Grants are available. There's direct grants, direct federal grants, and there's grants managed by the state. I spoke to Attorney General, Attorney General Ford, about this. That I don't know who developed you guys' process and grant application. But my opinion is, is like, it's deter, deter people to actually apply. Because it's so difficult, it's so overwhelming. So, I think there's, I say it like this, I like to keep this big simple. If you need to take a course on how to write a grant. You're making it way.
There are actually professional people that do nothing but write writing, because it is so incredibly complicated and convoluted.
That's right, so it's, it's just, we don't have those resources. So, we do what we can, so we get told there's X amount of money. But we don't know how much that X amount of money is allotted to rural areas. So, I don't even know if there's equitable redistribution of federal grants to the rural areas. Because we can have this discussion about who needs these types of funds more. Urban, where they have their fund more services than here, or us, that we lack it. So, if you just look into that and try.
Come up with some equitable way to get you guys. Because, yeah, you're right, because in an urban area, Reno, Sparks, Vegas, they have a level of social services that exist in the community as a whole that you guys don't even have. And then, as we heard in the last meeting, even the ones you do have, because we created new hoops to jump through, you're losing those. So, it's like a double whammy from the legislature, and so, hopefully, we get something on that.
Please be aware, though, that again, when we're talking about things that we have in similar situations. In my community, we have almost every social service is in a three-mile radius in my community. I have the Las Vegas Rescue Mission, the Catholic Charities, Shade Trees, Salvation Army, all concentrated in this very, very small community. So, what does that mean for me? That means that if I'm driving down Bonanza Road, which is one of my large boundaries, I'm seeing all of the social service problems. The homelessness, which could be a result of mental illness or substance abuse problems. Everything and anything, right in this very, very small area. We are inundated all the time. And I'm getting, you know, conversations of frustration in my community all the time. Yes, we should have all of those things available. The reality is, just as you don't have the support, we don't either. The state of Nevada does not spend significant amounts of money from our limited resources on mental health. It's a conversation now, we're talking about it now like we've never spoken about it before. But for us in our community, we have been the dumping ground for as long as I've lived there, twenty-four years, of every social service issue. And it is difficult, right? Because our, my neighbors are the ones who are having people sleeping on their yards and all the issues that you're talking, that you are dealing with. I feel you, right? But I ask a person a question who asks me, you know, what are you gonna do about this? And here's my question to all of us. Do we not wanna see it, or do we wanna solve it? If we don't wanna see it, we're just moving the problem to somebody else. If we wanna solve it, we have to be honest about where we are. We have a substance abuse problem in this country. Let's just be honest. We have a substance abuse problem. Why? Why are our young people checking out and using drugs? Is this just a cool social thing to do? Or do our kids really have some mental health problems that we don't wanna admit that they have? And if we are not going to admit that they have it, then that means that we're not gonna fund it in school with social workers and mental health counselors. If we're not gonna admit that they have problems, then we're not going to make sure that we have certified family counselors and psychiatrists and psychologists to deal with the issue. So, we can, you know, talk about enforcement and all those things all we want to, right? That's at the end of the cycle. The beginning of the cycle is first admitting that we have problems that are causing mental illness in our country and dealing with how we deal with it in Nevada. This is our home, right? So, how do we deal with this? And I think that it starts with first an admission. And secondly, the next step is to fund solutions. And those may not always be the police or jail, right? Just like with our restorative justice, if we're not doing something that is actively, if we're not doing programming that is actively enabling people to choose whether or not they wanna change their behavior, we're just warehousing, right? And so, I feel you, you know, you should come to Vegas and take my tour in my neighborhood too. And you will see exactly what Senator and Assemblywoman saw. We are struggling, and I mean struggling, people really having problems laying on the street in the heat and the cold with drugs of every kind and mental illness. And we've been begging for assistance. And there's just, there's more people, few resources, it is really, really difficult. And I'm hopeful this time.
I think there's a void there. I mean, mental health is definitely a problem, drug addiction is definitely a problem. Unless law enforcement hook them up and they, or they get into the court system, sometimes it's hard to get help for some of these people. And sometimes when you put a uniform involved there, that escalates the whole problem rather than solving it. I mean, you know, that, that seems to just stir things up, you know? Nothing against law enforcement, you know, they do us a great job here, but, you know, it's just, you throw a uniform in there, somebody with a gun, and you're gonna get pushed back. And, you know, it's like, we've got a void of how do we reach out? You can't force those people to do it unless they get involved.
So, in Clark County and in the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, the city of Las Vegas calls it the Moore Team. I don't know if you've been down to look at what they do down there. And I think Clark County calls it the Care Team.
And Sparks House, it's called the Hopes Team.
Okay, and so, this is where they are pairing up social services providers with the police.
Most.
Most, yes, and that's something that I was entertaining, but I don't have the funds.
Okay.
And that would be excellent.
Yeah, so you have nothing like that. You don't have a mobile crisis team that goes. Like, I called and reported some people setting up a camp in one part of my town in Sparks. And I'm kinda like, you can't live there. And so, I called Sparks Police Department and they said, oh, we'll send the Hopes Team. And they did, and I drove by the next day and they were gone.
And that is something.
Right, so you need something like that.
That we need to fund.
Right.
And that was, that's why I was looking at the grants about social workers. And by the way, the state is, I need a social worker.
We need to get a grant so you can get some money to get the grant for social workers.
Need a grant so you can take the course to write a grant.
Go back to her original point, where does it start? In my, I never, honestly, I've never taken drugs in my life, never done any of that stuff. Because my dad would whip my ass, right? So, that's what's missing in some of those things, it's just plain old-fashioned family discipline. Anyway, that's the way, we have to spend a lot of time on this one there. Because that is a very complicated, long discussion with a whole lot of, I mean, for decades. Because there was a window of time in the United States where there was a lot less than now. For some of us old enough, we remember that, you know? And the first time we smelled marijuana, I was like ten years old at Sparks High School, where I lived right by. Went and told my dad, and five minutes later, like, three cop cars over there, and, you know, like this huge thing.
I was in a hotel in Vegas, and my wife goes, they have a skunk in here.
That is, we were in a hotel last night, we stayed in a hotel in Carson City. And when we went in the bathroom, it was raked in marijuana. Alexis got on the phone and actually called the front desk, we just wanna know, let you know, we didn't smoke the stuff in here.
Well, I didn't want them to like charge me for your staying.
Again, it's become so common.
Our society has changed. It has changed, I mean, kids aren't getting the guidance from home that they should. You know, both parents have to work, they're left home alone, dealing.
Well, one parent, yeah.
They're, our society has a lot of problems and, you know, law enforcement necessarily isn't there.
They gotta pick up the pieces, see, we expect them to do the miracle work or the social workers and that. That's just kinda like, you know, not dealing a shot at the root of the problem. You guys are dealing with the branches of the problem.
We have limited authority, and we know our limitations. That's why the pressure takes in, and we have the foothold, we want to pass it to somebody else. Unfortunately, we don't have anybody to pass it to, so it's kinda like.
And then the individuals in that catch twenty-two cycle where, yeah, you pick them up again and again, and burglary and stuff.
I will not go beyond my authority, beyond my scope, because I'm dealing drugs. Free you, you know? It is frustrating, and I know it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a process, and I understand.
Well, we're looking to him, we'll talk about it, we got how many miles to drive that?
Two hundred?
Oh, you've got a couple hundred miles to get back to Carson.
If you find out.
She's stuck with me.
I was gonna ask you if I could introduce you, get your car to introduce you to the folks, some of the folks in our team. Our marshals do it. And I was at an event recently, and you can tell the disposition of how our marshals and the Moore Team deal with this as opposed to Metro. You can see that there's a different, the way they carry themselves and how they interact. That the training has been really done well. And in the last session, we did electronic, you can get it on somebody on the phone. And they can have a tablet, and that person can actually, if they choose to, get on the phone or the tablet and begin to start the process of getting services. So, it's so hard. I mean, I don't, in the, you know, the struggle, I don't, it's frustrating to me too. But if you want to, I would be happy to connect you with some of our folks down in Vegas. And they might be able to help you with some grant stuff and some ideas.
Did you address any of the assembly bills that I sent you the email on earlier at the commission? That would be amazing.
Five-minute recess.
I'm gonna dovetail off what Steve Ringgill spoke about with regards to law enforcement. I have a law enforcement background, so it's very near and dear to my heart. And some of the assembly bills I read, I didn't review all of them, but about the first hundred. And one that I had real concerns with was AB thirty. AB thirty, I believe, addresses changing post requirements to allow non-US citizens to become peace officers in the state of Nevada. I know they did that in California, I don't know how successful that was. But I see a host of issues with doing that. The reason being is, not only do we have to do backgrounds on these individuals that are testing to become a police officer, that takes months, three to four to six months to make sure that they have a clean background. I see a can of worms being opened if we allowed non-US residents to test for law enforcement positions because that would make that background even more difficult to find out if they had any kind of criminal history. So, that is a huge concern for me. And hopefully, it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, it was a huge concern for me too when I first noticed it. Because it brought to mind, I don't like inconsistencies in the law, like exceptions. Well, there are places for carve-outs, those are population caps, things like that. But on this sort of thing, when we're dealing with public safety, I thought of, so, our son serves in the Navy, and he was stationed at Coronado. And I got speaking with a young man that was my waiter at one of the restaurants. And he worked on one of the bases, and he was an immigrant. And he told me that he gets to work, because at Coronado, there's several bases. He says, well, I can work here at this part of the base, but I can't work on those other two or three bases because you have to be a citizen of the United States because of security issues. And I said, really? I just found it fascinating. And he explored it more with me, and he completely understood it, he wasn't complaining about it. So, when I saw this, I remember that conversation, I thought, we already have, you know, federal statutes that say you can't work in certain security sorts of environments unless you're a resident of the United States. So, that would be my question, like I said, I just briefly saw it myself. So, but yes, I will certainly, and that would come through judiciary.
Okay, great.
But you should be aware, though, that non-citizens, I don't know what status they have to have, can serve in the military.
The other thing too, you gotta realize is.
Well, and that's what, that's what this young man, he was serving, but he couldn't be in certain installations, I guess.
They're working hard to try to get people that are similar backgrounds as law officers, okay? You get a white guy in a predominantly Hispanic neighborhood, dealing with people that may be, in some cases, illegally there, and there is an immediate friction and distrust. You put somebody from that culture in that same uniform, in that same neighborhood, and the element of trust and consequently, the ability for them to be able to help, you know, keep the community in check and follow laws is enhanced. And so, that may be one of the reasons behind that bill is simply to say, okay, look, you got this huge population of folks that are not citizens, working in the clubs and so forth. And all the people in the law enforcement community don't relate to those people, there is gonna be friction there naturally. So, that may be one of the ideas behind it. I haven't read it, so I'm just guessing.
Is that a symbol of Torres?
I'm sorry.
Is that a symbol of Torres?
Uh, I'm not sure whose it was, AB thirty.
Yeah, so, I would strongly suggest that when you see things like this, we all have email addresses and phones. Now, we're staffed up, now that we're going into the legislature. I would really, really strongly suggest that you whip out an email or call the office and talk to people about what they're thinking, right? Like, where is this coming from and what are you thinking?
Sure.
Because on its face, sometimes, when we're talking, you know, you're hundreds of miles from Las Vegas or hundreds of miles from another urban place, it may not make sense to you on the outset, but there's a purpose behind and a conversation and communication could probably really reveal.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
I'll follow through with that.
I think what's the intent of the bill?
Well, like what the Senator was saying, that maybe that's what, you know, it's to try to encourage, you know, policing in those communities that they feel they can relate and understand.
Well, definitely pros to that regard, no doubt.
Right.
However, it does create a, oh, with the scrutiny of law enforcement as of late over the last few years. You definitely wanna make sure that the person you're bringing on board is clean, has a good background, there's no skeletons in their closet.
Yep.
Um, because then you open another area. But, that's a good idea, I will certainly get ahold of whoever authored that bill.
I think it's hers, but I'm not sure, I, I, I think I read that it was her bill.
And she's very open to conversations.
If it's hers bill, she's, if she's top drawer.
Okay, thank you.
Although, it's important that your views are expressed, because the reality is, that what's intended for a problem in predominantly Clark County. Has corollary problems for this gentleman in, in Humboldt County, right? And so when he goes and tries to hire people, suddenly he's forced to take people that may not be the kind of people that he wants on his horse, frankly. And so, you know, that's why it's important, even though, yeah, it doesn't deal with us too much. You need to get your input in on that stuff, because in so many cases, like you guys have expressed already. What we try to do in the bigger areas, and is designed to take care of a problem in a bigger area, has an unfortunate ripple effect on rural communities that, you know, you know. Yeah, I love to have all these social programs, guess what, we don't have the funds, we don't have the population, we don't have the social workers. Yeah, you pass a law to state level, deal with the problem in Clark and Washoe County, how am I supposed to deal with it here in, in Humboldt County? You know, that's basically what you're saying, Jay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Okay, Matt, so putting it up to the public, do anybody wanna address the Senator Assembly person?
Didn't beat us up already at the county commission?
I would like to.
Sure.
Uh, hi, thank you guys for coming up here, uh, my name is Susan Frye, I'm resident of Orvada, Nevada. Which is close to a lithium mine that you guys might heard a little bit about today already. Um, so we're talking rural issues here, and I'm gonna take us either farther out into the rules, into the unincorporated zones out there. So, when the Thacker Pass project received, uh, approval to go ahead, uh, last winter, well, two winters now. In twenty twenty-one, the citizens out in Orvada and Kings River formed the Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens Group. Uh, we were concerned with how best to preserve our community going forward, knowing that this project was gonna bring a lot of changes to us. Uh, we tried to work through all of the regular government, uh, comment periods, things like that, we found ourselves unable to. Really effectively communicate our needs through all those, uh, like the chief was saying, you, you kind of almost need like. Assistance in how to maybe apply for grants, or even make good public comments and things like that. Uh, we thought that we really needed to be heard by the right people. Cause we had local, unique knowledge to some problems that we saw with the plans for the mine. Uh, we didn't find that seat at any of the government agency tables that we were invited to be at. So, uh, in the summer of that year, twenty twenty-one, we. Accepted an invitation from Lithium Nevada Corp to enter into some facilitated discussions with them. Hopefully, to create a, a collaborative work group going forward, where we could discuss our community needs. Directly with the management of the mine, and that's been pretty successful so far, uh, we've identified a lot of problems. That we can work on together with the management of the mine. Uh, we were really fortunate that they offered this process to us at no cost to our community. Because being a unincorporated community, we, we don't have, you know, the kinds of funds that even a, a city or a. A county government could, you know, allocate to those kinds of things. Uh, Tim Proudley here, he's part of our work group from Lithium Nevada. Uh, so we've been working together for over a year now on some of these things, and we've been really grateful that we've been given that opportunity by them. But we also recognize that there's other communities in Nevada that maybe are not gonna get that kinda opportunity from. New mines that are gonna go in, and especially in the push for, you know, green energy and lithium and things like this, there's. Potentially some communities that are gonna be kind of bowled over. And asked to bear this burden that they don't really have any kind of representation to speak about with anybody before these plans are made. So, uh, the Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens would like to propose, uh, maybe some new legislation. Cause you guys were talking about how many bills you like to have every year, so we can add another one to that, that would potentially bring. Um, some kind of, of funds or assistance to these smaller communities, so that they can create a process. Where they can interact with. Management of these mines that are gonna potentially be coming into their communities. Um, particularly places that are, are in really close proximity to these mine sites. Because, uh, we found that. Even in the environmental impact statement that came out for this mine. We were identified as a potentially disproportionately impacted area. But also, uh, most of the socioeconomic studies and whatnot that had been done. Indicated that, you know, mining is the number one employer in Humboldt County, uh, they didn't expect to negatively impact any areas. And even though in that same kind of paragraph, our community was specifically mentioned as one that was gonna have. A higher risk of, uh, traffic and potential for accidents. Uh, higher noise pollution, higher air pollution, uh, potentially some. Population issues, because we have such a low number of actual units available out there. Uh, so, we kinda felt like. All of this, uh, concept of community buy-in for these new mines coming into areas was more focused toward the. The county seat level governments and the, the county residents as a whole, and. Not much interaction with the actual places that are gonna be most affected by these.
Now, your neighbor Ron Cherry, was that, I don't know if you were at the last meeting or not, but he, oh, he brought up something very similar, where he basically wants to set up a fund.
Yeah.
Where you get some money for small communities, uh, to act almost as a third party, well, cause the mines typically do their own research, but you guys. You know, it's the fox guarding the hen house concern.
Yeah.
And, and he had brought that up.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's on the same page as what you're talking about.
Yeah, he and I are on this, we're this group together, yeah.
Yeah, he brought that up, and he said, why don't you guys try to get us a fund, and he, and the way he suggested to fund it. Is through the net proceeds of mines, and, and use some of that money, basically set up a fund, and the small communities are gonna be significantly impacted. Have some resources to turn to, to challenge a, you know, multi-million, billion dollar mining company.
Yeah, cause that was our problem, you know, even going into the facilitation process with Lithium Nevada. Uh, we had a lot of discussion on, you know, do we trust this, who's paying the bill for this? Are we really being, you know, fairly represented here? Um, you know, that, that's a lot of concern, and as representing our community. We were having to answer to our community, and every time Lithium Nevada offered to pay for something, uh, I think one time they bought sandwiches. For a community graduation, and, whoa, we were in big trouble for that, you know, because. Just everything was met with so much suspicion.
Was under a hundred grams of sandwiches?
No, no, round here sandwiches don't go that.
Brownies, brownies.
But everything is, you know, everyone's so suspicious of anything that the mine is behind that. We felt that if we had our own funds to try to do some of these things, we could, you know, better represent our community.
Honestly, it sounds like a very reasonable thing, and the funding mechanism could be there, so we told Commissioner Cherry that, that, you know, we will look into that, cause it, you know, look. Reality is two hundred fifty people up against a big mining company, uh, you know, you're not all lawyers, you're not all engineers or experts, and yet. You basically have to come to meetings like this and make your case, in front of people that can hire the big engineers and all that, and are doing their own studies. About their own potential impact, it's a very legitimate concern.
Yeah, and, and we're just feeling like, uh, we're kinda out there in the county, and, you know, we're not at every county commission. We're not at, you know, all the meetings with everybody, and these decisions are being made at levels above us, that we're not really getting any. It's not a democratic process, nobody's coming out there and asking us if we're okay with it. Um, so in the end, when it just kind of like happens to these communities, and we do have the problems with the extra traffic and extra people. Our school is. Meniscule compared to what other schools you guys might be used to, we're maxed out at about thirty-five students. Uh, so adding any extra families or anything is really gonna be a burden to our community, and. We just really felt like we weren't being heard in that process.
I'll say to you, is what I said in the other meeting, which is, um, it's wonderful to see advocacy in your community. Um, we, we face this a lot in, in my district, um, an old, uh, urban, uh, community that has been. Uh, the cut through for two freeways in the last fifty years, a, a major interstate, ten lanes. And now, um, uh, five or six, I don't know how many lanes ninety-five is. And I know how that feels, to, to feel like no one is listening to you.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Um, you know, we want good things for this state, but we also wanna have it to be a livable place for us when all this is over.
Right.
Um, I would strongly suggest you to follow up with us. Um, this is Ira and Alexis's district, but I'm here to, to support. Because they are my colleagues, sisters and brothers, in trying to do what is good for this state. Um, I hear you, and I feel for you, I know we need to move forward, but with respect, right? And, and consideration, um, and I encourage you to talk to the people in the other communities, and you all stick together. And determine your message, and be clear on what it is, the mitigation, as Ira said. We have a, a national need for lithium.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, we recognize that, for sure.
And we all recognize that, right, and so, it's not that we wanna stop progress, but we don't want progress to stop us. So, um, you know, I'm here, um, to be supportive, and I just encourage you to keep communication with the other communities. Even if they're a lot, a little bit larger than yours, that information that you share with one another will be what you will need. Um, to, to be able to make your ask in the most effective manner.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And I, and I know these folks are, are reasonable, they know you're gonna come. Um, be clear, um, stay on us, but also stick together, it, it's important that you do, and we hear you. Um, wait till you get to the point where they've got somebody in a thousand people, and you need housing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Right, then, now you're gonna start feeling like what we're feeling, right? Where you need housing for people, and then your roads. You know, don't be afraid to, to sit down and map out what the problem really, not the problem, what the challenge.
Right.
Really is.
Yeah.
Right, and, and make sure that you all are bringing that full picture, not in a bad way. But in a complete way, so that you don't say, oh, I'm just concerned about this little thing, and then you don't. You know, you forget about the other part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I think that you, you will be successful, I know that these folks will, I'm, I'm gonna believe. That they're gonna work with you, um, and, um, we'll do our part to help.
Mm-hmm. And to Lithium Nevada's credit, I mean, we have spent. Hundreds of hours together, working on these projects already, uh, identifying all of these concerns and. Trying to identify things that we can do to, to make it okay for our communities. But we also recognize that there's gonna be other communities that.
Right.
Are not gonna be that fortunate.
That's where you come in, right, as an advocate, is not to leave them behind.
Yeah.
And this is, this is what we see in my community all the time, is that when we're, when we see that there's a, a challenge here, and we're addressing it. Now, as, when I was doing some advocacy work, then it was my responsibility to go to those folks and say, hey. We just faced this, you might wanna know about this, consider this, please gather your folks up to work together. We can partner, um, you know, to try and have one message that is clear and as complete as possible. Then that keeps them, you know, then they know what they're gonna be faced with, they know that in your community, in this community, it's the same issues. And they, and, and we don't have, you know, a different, um.
Spokesperson.
Yes, and, you know, that you, you're speaking with one voice.
Yeah.
Be careful about the concept of the democratic process, because remember. Democracy is defined as two wolves and a sheep voting on what to eat for lunch. When you have two hundred and fifty people in your community, and they could bring a thousand potential people there for housing, that's democracy.
Mm-hmm.
And that ain't good for you, so minorities need protection, and Orvada, technically, you're not a democracy at the moment, you wanna make sure as a minority group. You are protected from a big rapacious mining company that could bring a thousand people into your community and totally change their dynamics.
Yeah, that's what we've been working on.
That's democracy.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I brought a copy of this letter for you guys. Yes, you can all take one with you.
So, Mayor, may, may I just say one thing on that, I just, I just wanna say to.
Hang in there.
For Dominic, or mostly Alexis and, and Ira, that, that idea, which I heard for the first time this morning, just sounds helpful to us as well. So, to the extent we can help you push that idea, and that might include get out, get out of the way. Uh, we recognize that, but if, but if Lithium Americas can help in pursuing the bill that Susan is proposing, we'd like to be there.
For a community fund, Cherry was talking about.
It sounds helpful, and it, to, to get, to get, to build trust, whatever, whatever it takes to build trust and solve problems, it is, is a good thing.
And we, we had another thought on the bill, I don't know if Ron brought it up, but, uh, we even talked about, close your ears, Tim. Um, having, uh, potential mine projects that are coming into an area, create like a matching fund. To go with it, so they're investing in, to the community that they're coming into.
I have a question, actually, maybe for legal, um, so we talk about using NPM for part of this fund. I know we, we had some changes with mining tax, so I, I don't know how this would apply. You get a portion of the NPM as a city or the county this?
City does.
County, yeah, okay, so since I don't have legal for this county, um, would this fund idea. Take away from the funding that they get, would it have to come out of that, or could it be a separate peel off from NPM?
Well, it depends on what they, they decided legislatively, I mean.
Yeah.
Clearly, net proceeds is allocated, how the legislature says it's allocated. And so, it could come out of what the total amount that the county gets, or special districts get, or it could be.
Which would not be my preference, cause then we're hurting the county, right?
But, but the struggle with, with, with that proceeds is, the urban areas don't have any mines. Want the money, cause the money's there, and the world's been used to getting it, because that's where the mining activity is, and so.
Well, and they just swept it, so I know our superintendent was having a meltdown, because we didn't think it was gonna apply. And when we read it, it, it was a very vague clause, we thought it wasn't gonna hit till next, so then it was less, but. Almost down to the, what, five percent, that you can't, can't go below in your budget for the district, and so we were in a panic mode. So, Tim, you had something about the NPM, were you gonna say, I started, or just clarifying?
I was just gonna go into the weeds about how it's split, but it, it's a property tax that.
Right.
Is five percent, and the, and the state gets the difference between the county rate, which I think is about two and a half cents, maybe in, in. Humboldt County, and so it comes out coincidentally about fifty-fifty, they get two and a half cents, a hundred, and. And the big state gets that, and, and you're absolutely right, if the, if the legislature says, well, it's gotta come out of that state piece.
I would rather it come out state piece, not the county piece, but.
But that's been, see, go back historically, net proceeds was pretty much going to the world. But then, as, as the states, money deficient, because they're poor managers. They're sucking the money out of where everything's sucked out, and that's, that's what people.
Yeah, okay, so.
That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, so then we would direct, in that bill language, that it would specifically come from the state portion, not the county portion. Okay, thank you.
And Susan, what you're saying is to have that be a fund that the, that like the community of Orvada could allocate towards something that you want to build. Yeah. Based on those. We were proposing for it to benefit the unincorporated communities in Nevada, the ones that, you know, we don't have.
Right, all this.
County board and all that kinda stuff out there. county board and all that kinda stuff out there, so we we just really found ourselves kind of out in the middle of the lake without a paddle, you know, when everything hit and we believe in the process, that we've been uh, working with Nevada Lithium on, so we want to ensure that other small communities in the state can participate in a process like that going forward.
So you kinda wanna enshrine what you were able to do just out of goodwill.
Mm-hmm.
You would rather not rely on the whim of a mining company
Yeah.
to say, okay, we'll work with you. This would kind of
Yeah.
qualify.
It it put us in a position of our community, uh, the mine is kind of being our benefactor, which we're fortunate for, but also it's not a very secure position to be in.
This kinda hits upon the fact that we live out over by the airport and nobody anywhere has reached out to us, period, about the transloading facility. We've, we haven't heard from anyone from the mine. We haven't been given any information. It's just been a shock to us.
How, how, what timeframe are we talking? That this
We just found out about the location in the last two, three weeks. And it it just, yeah, there's, there was no requirement for anybody to notify any of us. There was no requirement for anything. It's, and like I said, no one from the mine has reached out to us. And it's right out in my backyard. And that, that doesn't start things off very well.
And and it's not set in stone, though. It's, this is just the beginning.
No, and it's so hard to find information. Like I said, I heard like over a year ago that they were looking at near the airport. But I I tried online, I tried to find more information and I couldn't. And it wasn't until, we didn't find out about the parcel or anything until just very recently.
Yeah, we we we've triggered an appraisal process and we did uh, work with the Humboldt County Economic Development Authority to identify a few different spots that align with the economic development goals of of the county and was on the rail. Of course, it's gotta be on the rail and has the land that that we need. It's it's a, it's a large facility to to pull the train completely off and have the ability to move goods on and off of that. And so the leaning site that is, that is risen to the top, that fulfills our needs, the needs of of the the economic development in the county, is zoned appropriately, uh, is at the airport. And so what we did on the tenth of this month was applied to have a, an appraisal done. So that this is a public process that won't, won't, does not guarantee that one, that it's, that fits our budget, and it doesn't guarantee that we would get it, because it would be a competitive bid to to actually purchase or lease that land. And so I think it's probably gonna take uh, several weeks um to to maybe months to get the appraisal back and that that will take us to the next step, if we actually wanna pursue that piece. In the meantime, uh, we
So yeah, no, no purchases.
It's not zoned for that, by the way.
No purchases.
It's, it's not zoned for that. It's owned commercial.
That parcel's owned airport industrial district.
Commercial.
No.
Airport industrial.
Through the, through the county, it's owned commercial.
It's industrial district.
That parcel was industrial.
Somebody needs to fix their online stuff, cause
If you, if you look at the assessors map, it said the, the, I can't remember the exact phrasing that is used, but there, the piece that says commercial is the land use code, which is totally separate. It's used for appraisal purposes. The uh, actual zoning designation is further down and it's airport industrial district.
Is that on the same thing?
It's on the same page, yeah, because I had another, uh, actually Ashley brought it up and asked about the land use code, which is strictly for appraisal purposes for tax calculations.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to offer a couple, uh, thank the three representatives for being here today. My name is John Bart. I've lived in Humboldt County here in Winnebago since nineteen ninety. Um, two, I have two separate, fairly different uh, types of comments to offer. I work in the mining industry. I'm a, at the part of my career where I get to, don't have to go to a mine every day, I get to do consulting. And a couple of things that have to do with public safety. I don't know if this was brought up at the county meeting, but um, uh, for those of you who've driven on ninety-five and highway ninety-three in the eastern part of the state, maybe highway ninety-three between Wells and Jackpot Passing Lanes, uh, uh, are done very well. It was one summer when I worked at a site up there, we had one head on collision a month. Uh, and that was, uh, that I'm glad that that situation's been fixed. We have, I think, highway ninety-five, we'll need some more least passing lanes. Uh, no, highway ninety-five, uh, between Hawthorne and and Tonopah, uh, it's it's wide open and it maybe looks like you don't need a lot, but um, uh, there's a lot of truck traffic. There are a lot of of people who who uh, move back and forth seasonally. Uh, and basically, it's a
Ninety-five.
It is, uh, it is not, uh, it it can be more exciting than it should be. I just would encourage the state to take a look at that for the purpose of public safety, those two things. Uh, it's a, it's something that happens every single time I drive on those two highways. I just wanna bring that up. The other one's unrelated to to that at all. The other activity I've been involved in since nineteen ninety-eight here is why my wife and I have served in a local nonprofit, that's the Local Arts Council. And I want to just offer to you that when the funding comes up for the Nevada Arts Council, that you support it. Their programs are good. Certainly, uh, I don't see any, any major expansions are needed. Uh, an inflationary increase for the, the type of things that they do. They 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 serve us well in the way that they serve us. And I just wanna offer that as a uh, as a, as some feedback to you. They uh, I think that they do a, they they do a good job. I think uh, Nevada Humanities, which is, which is a different kind of organization funded differently. They don't have as much activity in the city, but they also do a good job. I just wanted to offer those, those comments to you on that.
I ninety-five was an extensive discussion at at the county uh, meeting. Yeah, no, then that's a, that's a big one. So, we're working on that.
Yeah.
And there are some federal dollars coming too, so there's some, there's some possi- significant improvement possibilities in the Nutcracker future, I would suspect.
Yes, I I I was not able to make the county commissioners meeting, so uh, but I'd just like to offer again that however it is that the state and local governments encourage economic development, keep it up, do more, uh, help everyone do that more, that that's, that's kinda happening too. And that's really all I have to
You're the first person that's talked about the arts. I love it. Well, I was gonna say, what, could you take, give us some examples of what what you benefited by with the Arts Council funding?
Oh, gosh, okay.
You asked me to talk.
People that know me are rolling their eyes. One of the, one of the programs that's been most successful for us have, has been a program every summer where we contract with a nonprofit from Montana to bring in a week-long uh, workshops of of musical theater for children. And um, uh, it's one of our most successful in terms of of participation. And it's also the most successful in terms of um, just the business end. But that Nevada Arts Council grant is, uh, is part of that, that success.
Is it Missoula? Is it the million children?
Missoula Children's Theater.
I love them. They do our kids participating.
And 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 really without that grant, uh, we would, the the fees for participation would be much higher. And we do everything we can because, uh, let's just talk for this, this gets to everything here. We have, you know, we've talked about median incomes and all that. There's a real discrepancy. There's a twenty percent that's very prosperous and then eighty percent of the people that are are not as prosperous. And when we have to provide services just as the schools, just as the police, just as the city does, now how do you decide who gets what? You know, really, it comes down to that. And for us, we've been able to organize it. Uh, a lot of cooperation from local government and other entities to uh, to be able to offer it and keep the costs to where we get, we get, uh, we're able to have a a awful lot of participation. The other thing that they do and uh, we'll, looks like we'll be able to do it again this year. We weren't able to do it for two years because of COVID. But there's a professional dance company in Reno, uh, and uh, we, it looks like we'll be bringing the Nutcracker Ballet.
Oh, good.
Um, that's extremely expensive for us and that would not be possible again without the support from the uh, from the Arts Council. Uh, they offer, there there's some other things too, but those things, Mayor.
In our community, we have a, um, we have the West Las Vegas Art Center. And it's
It's awesome. You showed it to us.
It's beautiful. And we have, um, it's called the PBAC that, um, uh, it's a summer program for um, the arts and our kids learn, um, dance, um, mostly around African dance. Uh, film, uh, they film the whole thing and make a whole production out of it. Um, it's technical, behind the scenes, the lighting, the kids learn how to build stages. When I tell you I cry every single year. My kids did it. My two oldest boys did it for like three years straight. My baby did it for a year. And then he's a film student at Loyola Marymount, so last year, he went back as an instructor. And so he had, you know, he's got all the cameras and he had the kids, you know, filming and it makes your heart warm and it makes the kids have this feeling so much of accomplishment and participation and working together. And it, in in our community, it keeps our children focused and out of trouble in the summer.
It's all the energy.
And it's, and yeah, and it just, you know, so when you're talking to me about bringing the art, I'm like, hey, I got you, right?
I I'd like to offer you one observation since you've come here to see and learn. I grew up in Dallas, Texas. I didn't grow up in Nevada. Uh, I grew up in a, in a, in a very large city. Um, and my kids have moved all around and talked to a lot of people from, from a lot of places. And one of the comments uh, that that comes up has to do with the diversity of our communities and the diversity of towns. And I'll offer this to you. Uh, sure, wait, and I I think in Winnebago, because of the mining that brings people from all over the world, I think in Winnebago, because of the frontier, literally the frontier, because of the Native American, because of the Hispanic, because of the Basque, and because you put all that together, I would challenge any city in the, any city in Nevada to be able to match the diversity, not the numbers. Not the numbers, but the diversity of the people that you will meet and see in a town like Winnebago. And I just, I wanted to offer that to you and what you want to hear.
And if I could comment briefly on the um, arts funding that Mr. Bart has brought up. He's um, talking specifically to youth programs, which are a huge benefit. And I say that because there are parents and adults who come to those youth programs who have never seen a live performance either. It's a big asset to this community. So while yes, it's intended for kids, it spreads out much further and we have an adult population here that's seen ballet for the first time, that's seen what putting a production together looks like, you know, for musical theater, that they would not have had that opportunity otherwise.
Yeah, when we, uh, I think we've had, we've had the Nutcracker Ballet here five times. Um, I remember the last time we did, we had ninety-two youth involved fr- from Winnebago. And um, one of the interesting things that that came to was that there's seventy-four hundred people in the city of Winnebago and around ninety-two hundred in the area surrounding it, something like that. Those numbers are close. That means that that, tho- those two times when we had the Nutcracker Ballet, because of the ch- youth participation, we had one percent of the city of Winnebago dancing on stage. So I would, again, you know, our numbers are small, but um, but like
They pack a punch.
Yeah, well, you know, uh, and the the fact that, that, you know, the people in Orvada and people with lithium in Nevada created something, I can appreciate it because it's something that uh, they decided to do and uh, it's something that we've been working on for 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 several years here in the city too. Yeah, I mean, when we put on the ballet, I always ask, how many people in the audience have never seen a ballet? And fully, one-third of the hands go up.
At least.
At least.
Yeah.
And um, yeah, and and, yeah. The other thing we do is is some theater, uh, some, uh, a community theater, which is, which is taken off too. Our, our chorus is 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 still small, but you know, we had to rebuild that after COVID, so. Anyway, thank you very much for coming.
Louis Trout.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bart referenced the second agency, Nevada Humanities. We've taken advantage in Winnebago of a number of their programs where characters are played of an historical significance. And one of the most impressive was the lady who played Bessie Coleman, who came out to Winnebago during an airport open house and introduced people to the historic importance of what Bessie Coleman did as the first female pilot, first African-American female pilot. We've also had the character come out and play Ernie Pyle, the reporter from World War, War Two. Another major historical figure and do presentations with both schoolchildren and at the senior center. So definitely, the programs of Nevada Humanities are also a significant resource, not just for Winnebago, but for people all over the state.
I have the most important question. When does Louis Trout sleep? I don't think he does. The guy is like an Energizer fan. He's so organized.
We should thank you guys for uh, for him. He he pulled all this together. So, you know, we have four meetings here and Louis coordinated it all, it all.
Contact.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you very much.
We still got a couple to go.
And he's kind of our conduit, you know, he's contactless, lets us know what's going on in the community.
How much money you have that you need to play.
That's what he did.
I didn't get an envelope.
That's because you were the best one. You didn't, you don't have any outstanding.
Oh, okay.
So, anyway.
Okay, if there's no other for you guys?
Actually, I'd like to talk for a minute. Hey, on this transloading thing, like uh, like Ira said, the mine's gonna happen. If you're in that meeting uh, before, he he, he knows what's going on. Uh, what Tim needs to know is a little bit of history. Okay, anybody know anything about Reinhardt Lane? It's actually owned by my grandfather. He actually took a chunk of his property out and made a way for the farms and ranchers to run their animals through. When I was a kid, that was a railroad tie bridge. The river took it out, so they put a cement bridge. The river would go over it, so they put that other bridge in to take the river. If you go look at that bridge, it can't handle the trucks. Your trucks will end up in the river. That's the, that's the biggest thing. And my ninety-seven-year-old grandmother, she lives on that ranch. So, I don't, I don't talk to her, just she finds this out, she'll try to strangle you. She can, she can set her walker down and walk through the yard. And they don't even know about this. I ran into my cousin on my way here. He just put a brand-new house on Reinhardt. Today, he found out. And I'd really like to sit down and talk with you about what we can do for the community to make it right. So you can do your mine and the people in this community don't have a problem with your mine or you or anything.
Yeah, we need to have that conversation. I appreciate that history too.
Because I found out you're helping Orvada out and you're the guy to to help us out to fix all of this. And there's, and my neighbor said, him and his dad have a piece of property out in Jungle where you put a spur on, but I didn't, I didn't get acreage. And I know there's power in a couple places out there. But there's Bottom Creek Road, there's three farms and ranches out there. And you look, and if you could do a road like they did at Twin, to Twin Creeks, it's a Mackleride, it's like driving a highway. You can cut the traffic out of the town. You can cut the traffic off of ninety-five up to forty.
Yeah, I'd like to include Tom, who you met at at the city council meeting.
Tom Haas?
Uh, Charis.
Charis, okay, yeah.
On our side in that conversation.
I know the big downfall is this young lady, it'll go right by our house because she lives right on forty.
Just move it to someone else's backyard.
Right.
That's, that's the game, right? We just keep moving it to someone else's backyard.
No, we need to hold them accountable, is what we need to do.
Well, if we can come up with a way to affect the least amount of people possible, or the danger, try and keep it away from as many people as we can. And the worst part about it is it does put it in her backyard. No matter how you look at it. But look at how many other people's lives you'll save.
Yeah, the transloading facility over by the airport, you, there's a lot more citizens. Not only that, but I would think you guys would be interested in the fact that Reinhardt isn't open year-round. So you're gonna have all that traffic going right down the center of town. Does everybody in Winnebago know about that yet? Because you guys are the ones who are gonna be held accountable. And you And you, you've got citizens who do vote for you because we can't, who are gonna find out about that.
This is a really conversation we need to have, you know, this thing's progressing. We get the questions answered that we've asked and that you guys have asked, so, um, at this time, we need to move on a little bit, so. I do want to thank you guys for
I had one more comment, only because I've, I've had a step out of the county commissioner meeting and I'm sure Ron Cherry had a pretty big conversation about I- ninety-five, long-term and short-term, and I just want to echo what he said about short-term. We all know we mean passing lanes, wagon lanes. But the contractor that has put the double yellow lines, that needs to be fixed. The passing out there. Um, did he, anyway, at the last RTC meeting, he talked about it. I know my wife goes from here out to Orvada and the termite. And there's double yellow lines because the contractor's not done with the contract, so he's not gonna cover those lines to put passing lines, passing dots, whatever. So it's double yellow.
The whole way?
Makes it illegal in the past period.
But they don't do it anymore, as he said, people just ignore that.
It's just created a free-for-all.
Yeah. And that contractor needs to be, uh,
Held accountable.
Yes.
That kind of leads into, if you guys have any influence on the direction of I- eleven, that would be a big plus coming through, through here.
I haven't seen that map since I'm in, they presented it several years ago.
There were like three options.
There's three options.
Also, that time represented hopeful and they were scared to death that it was gonna go up.
They wanted it not, not to die.
I would grant it, so yeah, it's a, it's a sensitive one.
Just wanted to plug for a little, a little, cause
But yeah, if, if you can protect, have somebody work on that contractor, because that's ridiculous.
And that's through, is that through Is that through N-D? Whoever they use?
It's Q.
Would have to be N-D.
Q and D.
Q and D.
Really?
Yeah.
They must have had something in the contract, I doubt Q and D on their own would just go in pink, double.
Are they doing that reliability purposes?
Because they were building it.
It worked.
Yeah.
So it was actually done by Q and D?
Oh, yeah.
They, or any engineer telling them to do it, or?
Well, I don't, I mean, from what I understand is they did it in order to con- continue widening the road. And they're, either they're not done or they're gonna continue next spring, so they don't want to
Totally inconvenient.
Well, it's more totally inconvenient, like, it's like Ron says, people are passing, ignoring the double yellow line.
Just making their own choices completely.
Rather than to suggest it, and I know that I do this, even if it's a road I travel quite often, especially if there's all those little hills, it's like, I rely on that double line to remind me, so you know, I wait till it's gonna open up, you know, I don't think I can see completely when that goes to that single with the dash. I'm like, okay, I can now pass on this side, so if people are making that adjustment call, that's
Well, that's because the contractor, there are, there's no option. You need to follow the, the person in front of you the whole time on fifty-five or, you know, whatever.
And what Ron said is you can pull out from his ranch and not be able to pull onto the highway because it's four or five miles for cars.
So technically it has to go through. We'll get on that one, too. I'll tell Tim about that right now.
I got it.
We're gonna call Q and, call Q and D on your phone like you called
I know.
The chief of staff.
I, I used to normally be at that, but he's dead.
Who runs Q and D anyway?
Matt Simenko, can we forward that?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I know.
That's probably well, actually. His dad was at our supply.
What if we say Reno is the biggest little city? No, Nevada is the biggest little state.
Okay, we do appreciate you coming back.
Thank you for all the time.
Nice to see you come see us again.
Appreciate it. You guys all show up.
Don't be strangers.
Louis?
You're always welcome. We missed you at the veterans' meeting.
Working on Saturday.
Well, I, I'd like to set that meeting up if you're okay with it. Uh, it does need to include Tom because he's an engineer.
Poor thing, we gave her a headache. Did you see this? She needed this after driving less.
You mean, you should put that mask on her.
Oh, I know, I know. Poor thing, she's got acid.
I was the hostess at the truck stop. All right, thank you, see ya.
They'll just leave you two there. I know, I just need two yeses. That's all.
Well, Max said yes, so they're
I was gonna say, wait a second.
Everybody do a lot of stuff on the basis.
Yeah, I know, but it's still on. I, I deal with it in states though, and still a horrendous process. And, and they have to be that way. I won't be there tonight because I, I can't stand here unless let's say Well, it's, it's no win because, because the, 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 the But as they become more westernized.
It was the Okay. We're gonna have to get back on track here. Next on our agenda. Administration. Airport, sublease fee proposal. Proposal to implement a hundred dollar per year subleasing fee for each non-owner operated hangar for all hangars located at the airport property. Alicia.
Okay, so this item kind of started with Dixie Air LLC wanting to sell their hangers to their son Chad. So Dixie Air owns about twenty-three hangers out at the airport, um, and they're operated as a business. Dixie Air themselves don't own any, uh, aircraft. They just simply sublease the hangers. That's the purpose of the, of their ownership, I guess. And at our current airport land leases actually prohibit subleasing. This process has been going on, the subleasing has been going on for several years, but it's never really been addressed until now.
But the prohibition's been in place since day one because the idea of leases was to encourage users of the airport to occupy a hangar here, that'll be all, going back to the nineteen-sixties, so.
So two of Dixie Air's leases expire and they wanted to renew their lease and they, they actually wanted their son to renew a lease and they wanted to sell the hangers for their son. But it was not good practice, I'll say, to, uh, implement a new lease that still had the subleasing prohibition, knowing that they were going to sublease. So there's been a lot of discussion going on with mayor, city attorney staff, as well as the airport board on what would be a fair practice for subleasing. We're not trying to run Dixie Air off the airport because we need those hangers there for people who have airplanes that will park them there. Um, so this proposal is what we've come up with and it's a one hundred dollar per year por- per non-owner occupied hangar. Um, so at Dixie Air, they have twenty-three hangers, if they were all subleased, then they would owe an additional twenty-three hundred dollars per year on top of their land lease rate. Uh, if they have some that are vacant because they don't have a tenant for those, they would not have to pay the one hundred dollars per year on those vacant hangers because they're not non-owner occupied. Uh, so that's the, the purpose of this item is to implement that one hundred dollars per year for each non-owner occupied hangar. And that, that would apply to somebody even if they own two hangers and they subleased one and they have their plane in the other one.
Explain how you come up with the hundred dollars.
So we, um, I looked at a lot of different options. Some airports, uh, implement a fat, flat fee, some airports do a percentage, some just take their land lease fee and have a higher land lease fee for those that have a commercial business or that sublease. And that was about, um, most of the time when they did that, it was about one and a half times for either a commercial operation or for subleasing. And right now Dixie Air's land lease fees are around five thousand dollars a year and so this hundred dollars per year for twenty-three hangers came out to twenty-three hundred dollars, which was fairly close to that one and a half times of the regular land lease fee. But it, it seems to be a simpler process than trying to calculate a percentage or to have two different land lease rates depending on the type of activity that's going on.
And, and the, the leasing of hangar space here, it never had like a market value. It was always a very, very low rate. And again, the, the, the purpose was to encourage, you know, people to, to have a hangar at the airport because furthers the airport uses, so it's never been a market rate. So, so we're not talking market dollars here, we're just talking the rates that we use based.
Well, I, I, I mean, I know we talked about it at airport board meeting probably for the last year, what we were gonna do to, to, uh, to clean up our language to allow the
Language is great.
Yeah.
But that's Clean up our practices.
Our practices, yes. And add this, you're right, excuse me. And add this, lead this hundred dollar per year subleasing fee for each non-owner occupied hangar. So I think it covers everything. I just had to know, there was a question at our last meeting about prorating. Will it just be some, so it's a hundred dollars of that for a month or a year?
Well, we, we start all our leases, we trust them on January first, and so it's kind of like the business license. If you get your business license in April, you're gonna pay.
Okay, the hundred, yeah, whatever it is.
So, and I, I mean, if, if we're talking, you know, it's costing them, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Then they, yeah, but I mean, they're paying, most people are paying a hundred bucks a year. I mean, prorating has cost us more administrative time, it's in call.
I totally support that, so, yeah, I think this is a great move. Get this sublease proposal, get the, the new leases.
Wayne, do you have anything to add? Your, besides everything we just talked about. We'd have better control on it and we'd have it, once a year, we would know who's in each hangar, whether it's subleased or what. And so would the FBO, we have more security and more control. And make that as part of the agreement for the sublease and all that. Alicia worked out all the proposed details for doing all that. It's a lot easier for her to manage it this way than going out with prorating and all that other stuff. And it's strictly aviation, so you couldn't put a, uh, say, say, say
Well, you can't put three hangars with mindset for them. You can't.
We're trying to clean that up.
You can't sell marijuana out of one of them hangers. It's gotta be an aviation.
Perfect. This would be, Alicia, you are monitoring all of this action or is it through the?
It's all on a spreadsheet. We keep track of those leases.
And then it comes through our offices, some, if, if there's a new person coming in to lease, it comes right through?
It's kind of like paying your taxes, you're supposed to report accurately, and so they'll have to report on whether they do or not.
And the thing, somebody come in for an application or a lease, it'd have to go through the airport board. The airport would make a recommendation to the airport manager and the city council and you would have the ultimate approval or disapproval.
So there are steps to make sure that we're monitored and everything that's going on.
So, the big thing is security and control about airport.
In the land lease agreement, subleasing is prohibited without written cons- consent of the city. So if, if Dixie Air wanted to sublease a hangar, they have to fill out an application. That goes to airport board, then city council, then they're added onto
That's for all twenty-three of the hangars, each hangar.
What we'll have to do though is, so we've got airport leases, however many of them are in effect, we'll have to amend the existing ones and then any new ones, we'll have different language. Because we've been, well, I think our airport leases is making, so we'll change things up.
So I know, I know.
So this would make it so, subleasing is not prohibited, but it's just you have to have written out the authorization from the city and you have to pay a hundred dollars a year. And are we, the city, is the city monitoring that hundred dollars or is the lessy?
The city.
Okay, so
We, we monitor all the leasing. Through the, the city, the city clerk, city back office.
So the owner, hangar pays their part for the sublesses, the subless fee would come to the city and say, hey, I wanna sublease this.
Owner is gonna pay everything, they work it out with the subless fee.
So Dixie would pay?
Subless fee, we just wanna know about them, we want, we wanna get paid for it.
Okay.
But we're not gonna be dealing with
So Dixie would pay the twenty-three hundred dollars and they would collect from their tenants that are leasing it, but we would know who's leasing it based on that written authorization? Yes.
That's how it's supposed to work.
Yes. In the perfect world.
That's right.
That's what we're hoping to get closer to with
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be very nice. I'd go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Prove the hundred dollars per year subleasing fee for the non-owner occupied hangar.
Have motion on the floor. Any further questions?
This isn't like an ordinance change or anything.
No, no, it's just a, uh, city council adopting, uh, a rule and we're, but there's no ordinance changes, no, just a motion, it's just, uh, just a motion.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on our agenda, administration, airport, hangar property leasing proposal. Proposal to lease airport Proposal to lease airport lease track three and lease track four, five to Dixie Air LLC under the standard airport hangar track leasing terms and conditions with the addition of the yearly subleasing fee for each non-owner operated unit.
So Dixie Air's two lease tracks, three and five, they actually expired at the end of twenty twenty, I believe. So they've been in a, basically a month-to-month tenancy since then. So they are still paying their lease fees, but these two leases have ended and so we need new lease agreements for tracks three and five.
These will be to Dixie Air, which will still be the?
To Dixie Air, yeah. I believe they still want to sell them to Chad Neely, but they, I think they have some things to work out on their end, so these will be to Dixie Air.
And that's really, what they, they, yeah, that's a quite a concern.
Any other questions of Alicia? Anything from Wayne?
Then I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the new lease for track three and track five to Dixie Air. The standard lease agreements and adding the new yearly subleasing fee as hoped by staff.
Motion on the floor. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, administration, fire department. Fire systems monitoring agreement proposal. Request to authorize an agreement for installation, setup of the fire alarm monitoring equipment at the fire department building and to provide continuous alarm monitoring services. We're gonna have alarm monitoring for just city buildings or is it gonna be?
Just specific city buildings. So fire department building, police department building. I believe those are the only two with maybe the armory for fire suppression systems. So we, we have a fire alarm and suppression system at the fire department. We've been cleaning up these inspection agreements as well as the monitoring agreement. From my understanding, the alarm has been working at the fire department, but it's not actively monitored by anybody. And so this will be the agreement for Delta Fire to, they're gonna install, install a wireless alarm monitoring system or equipment and then they would do the twenty-four seven monitoring of that system at the fire department.
Or it's PD. There's somebody there asleep all the time.
Well, we haven't.
It bothers me a lot. So we need somebody to monitor that.
Somebody off-premises. Sorry, chief. Didn't mean to disturb your existence.
So the installations, sixteen hundred and eighty-one dollars and a fifty dollar monitoring per mile.
Correct.
So the initial cost was what?
And we will have one more Delta agreement coming up in one of future city council meetings related to the the hoods, the commercial hoods at the golf course and here's the other one. There's one more somewhere. Oh, the sports complex concession stand. So we're, we're trying to clean up all of our fire alarms, fire suppression, fire extinguishers, trying to consolidate and, and know who is monitoring what.
So right now we don't have a monitoring system at our department?
There is a monitoring system there. I just don't think anybody's monitoring it.
And is that the same for the PD? Because I know when I was there, we couldn't figure out who was monitoring our fire alarms either. So is that the same?
To be honest, I have no idea who's monitoring, monitoring it.
There was an issue.
It's like a line that goes nowhere.
Yeah. If, I'll have Ken Howard get with you or Chad or somebody and we'll try to get all of this.
They're gonna monitor.
The, the system that's on there, we tried finding out, they've been out of business a long time ago, so then it was.
Yeah. It, it may not be.
So that's our next option.
So we're, we're not done with the Delta agreements. They're gonna keep coming.
Well, I would make a motion and to approve the the contract with Delta Fire for the one six, or sixteen eighty-nine initial installation and the fifty dollar monthly monitoring fee. As presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further questions? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, item eleven, administration, American Rescue Plan Funds. Update and proposals for use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Alicia?
So I've submitted our quarterly report. This is for September, no, October first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The first page in the packet, which is PDF page forty-six, is a summary of all of our projects that are in the system and how much we've spent to date and how much was spent in Q four. So to date, we have expended just over four and a half million dollars. This includes the six million dollars for general government services. We've done just under three million for that, which is going to result in the transfer to the capital improvement fund. So this includes that piece of it. So we're getting close to halfway through our, our ARPA funds. And the, the two projects that we have not started yet are the downtown street skate project and well eight. Also, the only thing done in the recreation complex was the two new flash pad components. And all of the other projects are either in process or completed.
Any questions? Everybody see that? That fly print?
I know. It's, I was gonna say earlier, I was like, God.
You can zoom in on it.
I did.
The table doesn't look as nice if I break it into multiple pages.
So, I know I should know this answer on well eight, the next major purchase is going to be the pump that you're getting some recommendations from engineering companies?
Yes, and there's been some discussion lately that there's a large private development planned in that area. And we've told the developer that if they wanna do the development, well eight needs to be finished and so they might do it for us. We'll see how that turns out.
Oh, great.
What area is that?
That's over like by Wingers, on the east side of town.
Good job.
Nice.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
No.
Just informational?
Just informational.
Okay, no other questions, we'll move on. Administration, Boathauer Memorial Pool and New Aquatic Center. Proposal studies and reports for developing a plan for abandoning the existing Boathauer Memorial Pool and options for funding and developing a new aquatic center. Alicia?
The RFP is out and proposals are due this Friday by three P M. I sent it out to thirteen different design firms and three have responded that they are definitely going to provide proposals. They have until tomorrow to provide their intent to respond. So we may give one or two more, maybe not. But I do expect at least three proposals by Friday. And then the committee, they'll be sent out to the committee and we'll talk about which ones we like best.
Were you familiar with any of them?
Yes, the, so the, the, one of them was the architect that did the Boys and Girls Club. They have provided an intent to respond.
Core?
Core was a construction company. Knit was the architect company. Another CTA, Cushion Terrell Architects in Boise intends to respond and what is the other one?
So this is just architects for the design?
The art, eh, the architects will be the prime consultant and then they have specialty aquatic design groups that usually work with them. So aquatic design group that was involved in the feasibility study, I believe they're a partner, but they are not the prime with one of those other architects, but I don't, I don't know who. We won't know until we get the proposals.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll move on to staff and council report. Alicia?
I gave a little bit of an update about well eight. We have been talking with Sean Engineering about it. There is the developer on that side of town that seems to want to keep moving forward. And I indicated that the, the slow point is actually me getting the, the pump design and the plans and stuff prepared. So if that developer used their engineer to design the wellhouse and the pump and the connection to the system, then we have the ARPA funds set aside to actually construct it. It would help a lot if they just designed it. So that's something that we'll keep exploring if that development continues. No new updates for the Eastside Curving Gutter Project. Still no decision from the FAA on the section one sixty-three review process. The BLM expansion, Armstrong is still aware of that, incorporating it with the heavy aircraft apron. I just saw an email come through from Barbara Bernsphinx wanting to meet to discuss it sometime soon. So that's still in the works. The recreation complex, the, there was a new grant opportunity that was released at the end of last week that has funding available for both the design and the construction of outdoor recreation, which includes ball fields. It included pretty much everything we wanna do with the recreation complex. Those grant applications are due at the end of March and so I'm still reading through the, the notice of funding and will hopefully report back on that. And it looks like something that we will probably apply for. Community yard, nothing new there. General aviation apron project is done. The heavy aircraft apron reconstruction design is moving forward. Armstrong was here last week. Wayne and I met them out at the airport to talk about that project. And the design of the Hanson Street Water and Sewer Project is also moving along and I'd hope to get plans to end up for review in the next week or two. And we'll have to get their, their sign off before we can put that out to bid. That's it.
Any questions?
I, I had a couple on a grant for the recreation complexes, state grant that are back.
It is a state grant. Let me see what the name is.
Is it a matching or just?
It is. It's a fifty fifty matching grant. But the, if we, using our ARPA funds as matching dollars is like doubling our paying for a.
Do, do we get any help from the county grants coordinator? Does that help write grants or is it used to all the grant fee?
Yes. It's called the Nevada Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program. And they have a million dollars statewide, which is not that much for the entire state. So I, I was thinking that the, whatever amount that Windhamaka could be eligible for would probably be best used to do final design of all the components at the recreation complex and then we could put them out to bid as funding was available by the city if we have the design sitting on the shelf.
Okay.
To get them shovel ready, basically.
Yeah.
You apply for funding for actual construction.
Yeah.
And then the Hanson Street Sewer Project, Water and Sewer Project, once you get a sign off, the sign off implies that we can tear up that street? Is that correct?
So it'll be a right of way permit from the end office that authorizes us to do work in there, right?
Okay. And then we would still have to go out for bid?
It will be a public works project, so I will have to do the request for the public works project number. We have to advertise just once for at least seven days, I believe, and then.
And when did the state want us to be done with this? In March or April? I mean, I know you're gonna work, they, they said they'll work around it if we're moving forward with it, but.
Yeah, I think they would like us to be at least working on it in March or April. They, they have until the end of the construction season to, to finish their surfacing project.
Okay.
But if it's a sewer project, it will go relatively fast.
Does it go under the railroad tracks?
No. This one is, it'll be water and sewer lines from Hanson and Sixth down all the way to Hanson and Second Street behind the movie theater. Okay.
Any other questions? Mike, what do you got?
I'm meeting doubt. I don't have a question.
Okay. Nothing to report then? Vince?
And I do not either. My HDA meeting last week, I did not attend family emergency, so I don't think things were, much was happening. Alicia?
I was not there. I was at a family dentist appointment.
I would've traded your place.
I went to the pool pact, Pam and I both went to the pool pact orientation. That was really good. The, the one day seminar that they put on for free, which was really nice. They had really great.
So now your pool pact group is up.
Information and everything, yeah. It was interesting to see some of the, like the committees that are served. I know Brandy and Alicia, both you guys serve on executive like committees for pool packs. So thank you guys for representing us in those things. Landfill meeting, my first one. So we did some like small write offs of old accounts. And Don with the county did bring up maybe improving the, some of the transfer stations out in the rural areas that he wanted to maybe present to the county later on. So that's just something that they're talking about. And then had a historic resources commission meeting and Dana said that they're gonna be done with the historic preservation plan here in the spring. And then she's, so she said that'll be a really big thing because we've never had one. So they're working on finalizing that. She did want me to ask about the, the website, whether we're able to host. She said at one point they were going to, we were gonna host like the meeting minutes and everything on our website through the city for the historic resources commission because it's like a branch of our certified local government. So see if we can do that, like who does our web meetings and whatever we can do that. She wanted me to bring that out.
It is an option, but I'd like to wait until we move to our new website. And actually, once the new website is up and running, we can probably give Dana access to put those things on there as a as a user, she, you have to happen to the website.
Okay. So I know she said she'd like them to be there and then she's not looking at renewing past June. And so she wanted us to start looking at someone that can serve on that committee in the capacity of the, the requirements after you have through the historic resources commission. But she wanted to have those minutes on there before, I don't know if we're gonna get the new website before June or not. But timing wise, cause she's hosting them on the museum website now. And so she said it'd be better if the city hosted it because it's through our CLG. So that was just something that she asked me to bring up. And then, so they're fixing that sidewalk in front of home and so thank you guys for doing that.
That could fix?
They're, they're working on it today. So. That's all I have.
Okay. Pam?
Yeah, a couple things. So FCC meeting was on January seventeen and we are really looking forward with establishing a walk-in resource center. And with three R building, that building is now owned by Brooke Esquabel and her family. So the concept behind this is that it'd be all volunteer bases. I kinda raised my hand when I shouldn't have.
Be volunteer?
I did. I did. So it would be a resource for homeless or anybody experiencing a crisis that they could go to. If I'm manning a place and the hours presumably were like ten or three, I would not be there to counsel them in any way, shape or fashion. I would just see what their crisis might be.
And refer them to.
And refer them to the proper entities. That location, I think, is kind of ideal actually because you've got the railroad tracks right there, the. Um, that location, I think, is kind of ideal actually, because you've got the railroad tracks right there, the homeless people, indigent people that come in. Uh, kinda hang around there. Brooke said that's where all of the junior high students walk through, you know, walk by. So anybody who just wants to come and talk to somebody and if they present some kind of crisis, then I can just refer them where they need to be. Don't know if it'll come to fruition, but, uh, it's moving. I never expected it to come to fruition, so I think that's why I raised my hand. Um, um, but, you know, the, the first thing we needed was a place. And she calls me after one of our meetings and says, oh, we could use the three R building. It's like, okay. So now it, it's moving along quicker than we expected. And at our ne- next FCC meeting, you know, she would like as many representatives from the community to be present, so we could discuss this. Iron out any issues that anybody may have, so Chief, if you couldn't attend. Alicia, mayor. Um, anyway, it would be nice to have something like that. How, uh, successful it will be, of course, remains to be seen. So that's just something that we're kinda tossing around. Uh, did attend the landfill meeting and actually already covered the highlights there. Did attend the training in Reno, that was actually very good training. Um, or not training, more or less, just, uh, orientation, what, uh, pool pack does all those foreign services. And then I have, I was assigned a committee that I've actually never gone to because I kept asking around, no one knew when it met. And it's the NNRC, the Northern Nevada Recreational Coalition. So, um, Paige suggested that I reach out to Gina Rathley and I did. And I said, hey, when do the, when's the next meeting? She says they haven't met since November because of the holidays. One issue that they are currently addressing, so I'm gonna read bits and parts of her email because that was a little lengthy. But, um, she said the only issue that is going on right now is that BLM has closed the road in Water Canyon about a mile below the trailhead.